Father, we ask you to be a fence for us and protect us every day as we go on time for life. We ask you also to watch your city, county, and the state, Father, and all of this country. Father, we just love you so much for what you do for us, and Father, there's no other way that we can make it, Father, and we just ask you to just deal with us and let us have the right to sit in our offices. Lead us as we ask, in Jesus' name, I pray amen.
I pray the leadings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the wisdom of the Lord.
Thank you, Councilwoman Moss. Ms. Sue, do we have any public comments? No. No? Okay, thank you. One thing I will say before we get started tonight, we have a very long agenda. I don't know if y'all take a peek at it, but it's 20 something items, so I'm gonna try to zip through it as quickly as we can, but obviously doing what we need to do for agenda item. So I'm gonna ask council if they will look at the consent agenda, which is an approval of minutes, consideration of motion for the surplus disposal, bank of hydraulic... No, I put on my license, so I was not getting this call. Okay. Creepin' to on that hydraulic parts inventory, consideration of motion for the surplus disposal, truck 38, 38, 38 meters, and a 2002 Ford F-450 service truck. Somebody will give me a motion of review.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item five is consideration of motion to approve resolution 2015-17, which appoints Bryant Taylor, our director by teaching, board of directors of labor, and center for the arts. Mr. Cheshire.
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all recall, council always asks that we have... That we have more staff participate in the rest of the three entities, the State Department of Vision and Visor Bureau, the DSDA, and State Department of Arts Council, and this is just another opportunity to do that. I appreciate the fact that council has asked us to have somebody, and we nominated Bryant Taylor, and we're also trying to formalize these more, so we can find the record that the term of return would be in some kind or form of a resolution to consider Bryant Taylor as one of the board of directors of the Center for the Arts.
Okay, I have a motion to approve resolution 2015-17.
Pro mue.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item seven, I was working on two different agendas, thank you, Ms. Sue, for pointing that out. Agenda item seven, and this is the right agenda, right, Ms. Sue? Okay. Consideration of motion to authorize the mayor to execute the GMA lease agreement for the city's KM 8,000 THPD asphalt pipe box in the amount of $41,224, motor rail radios in the amount of $24,997, $0.50 cents, and 2015 round $5,500 worth sub-admission in the amount of $119,060. I will ask Cindy to come up and talk to us about the GMA lease agreement.
These items are already been purchased, and if any more purchase, they will currently be disbanded from the GMA lease agreement. This is the mayor's office, I should send that out.
Do we have any questions before I ask for motion?
And those are all budget items, right? It's just, this is our method of...
We usually play, we ream our certain purchase items, and they come back with any items for the city and we're executing them.
How many radios were gained from 24 grand?
That's Jason, who knows?
About six or something.
Six.
Six. Any other questions? Do I have a motion for the mayor to execute the GMA lease agreement agreement? That's in due part two.
Motion to authorize?
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item eight is consideration of motion to approve change order number two, summary for the I-16 US Highway 301 South, 1 million gallon elevated storage tower, revised contract is $2,188,505 with a deduction of $11,200. Ban, please come up and address this, uh, denied.
I'm assuming that's on the savings of paint, those subs were bought, right?
Is that the same, the pipe that they did not use? That was a paint, a paint trade.
Now, if you recall, council, more money was spent to achieve that thing.
It was...
You recall, there was a change order...
It actually managed to rise the...
That's right. There was a change order to the effect of something around $29,000.
$26,705.
$26,705. Thank you.
But all this is a summary change order, adjusted corner, material blocks we used to construct the tank, and there was a deed of $11,000, uh, $300 on pipe that was not required. And this, this closed out that project as far as the final summary on corners and the building to the next project.
I do not. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Collins? Do I have a motion to approve change order number two, summary for the I-16 US Highway 301 South, 1 million gallons, excuse me, elevated storage tower?
Pro mue.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, agenda item number 10 is consideration of motion to approve resolution 2015-18, which is a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2016 budget for each fund of the city of states. Do I... Did we miss that? Is that an option? All right. Okay, I cannot operate off 10. This is not gonna work. All right. Consideration of motion to approve resolution 2015-21, which is a resolution authorizing adoption of the public county pre-disaster hazard mitigation plan. I think Jason actually was that correct.
This is required update to the public county pre-disaster mitigation plan. It's handled by the UMA department of county. This keeps county and municipal, and municipal, at least in county, applies for future mitigation funding from federal government. It's recently approved by FEMA, and next stop, next step is adoption. County and each municipal is formally adopted. This is a five-year update.
Can we talk a little bit nicer about what went into this? Because this is an extensive document that needs to have an update, and I think folks seem to realize what you're trying to do to make that happen.
Please, man, the functions for the county and the city, which we have, public works, transportation, police department, fire department, sheriff's department, and all the other agencies of the county and the other municipalities, you know, all work together throughout the year, having formal meetings, meeting, and going over how we coordinate our efforts as part of this plan. And all these come together, and we have, it's basically the last three guys. And I think we're not gonna include some financials from that area.
That ice hole was a good sample, to me, of the way that everybody works together. It's not just a city and county, it's just a state, it's hospitals. Everybody has representatives there early on as we start preparing. It had pretty frequent hurricanes, and when we get ready and we're prepared, and hopefully they continue to miss us after, but better be prepared. There is a lot of work that goes into that.
That's right. There's a lot of work behind the scenes, working with Gina, working with the EREPs, and other agencies, and all this, putting this document, which is, for the most part, more publicity, it's just a document on the shelf, but it's a working document that the city and county partners have to handle.
How often do you all update?
Five.
This obviously is the... So you update again in 2020?
If not, see, unless something unfortunately changes.
Okay. Are there any questions for Jason Moss? Okay, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2015-21, which is a resolution authorizing adoption of the public county pre-disaster hazard mitigation plan?
Pro mue.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess the only discussion, Robert, is your own opinion about doing this and following this plan, and I guess agreeing to do this, the odds of getting... It makes streamlining getting the reimbursements a lot easier.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I guess that's the... We're just kinda adopting paperwork. I wanna say that's one, that's a main reason to definitely adopt paperwork, is to say, "Look, this is how we get our money back."
We got in excess of almost, a little over $100,000 last time, and it is a challenge, it is a chore.
So without this kind of plan, it's difficult to get that back?
Yes, you do.
And that took how long to get that back after the ice hole?
FEMA started a different reimbursement process this time, for this hole. I think after Hurricane Sandy, they had some of the projects, they got their, with the red tape, and they tried to get the process. We got our check back pretty quick. We had to do a lot of fire department, police department, all the works, the city, and while they were prior to try to get it out.
That fight took, well, six months.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item 10. Consideration of motion to approve resolution 2015-18. Okay. A resolution to adopt fiscal year 2016 budget for each fund of the city of states for... I'll ask Robert to give us that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna read some of this, so I can get it all in. I said, "Convo, mayor and city council transmitted here with consideration of the state's budget for fiscal year 2016. I want to thank staff, especially the finance departments who contributed significantly to putting this budget together, which is a, which is a challenge. It takes a lot of effort on everybody's part, except it's obviously something we need to do. We need to do it right. And as a result of the efforts, we presented you a balanced budget that meets all the administrative and legal requirements. Our objective in the preparation of this budget was to meet the priorities established by the mayor and city council for the upcoming fiscal year, and to continue to provide high-quality services for citizens in fiscal response demand. Just a couple highlights of the FY 2016 budget. For all appropriated funds, total is $55,666,630. And that includes all your funds. General fund, the budget cleared by 2016 is $14,028,950, which is 25% of that total expenditure budget. Just, I think that's a hundred and fifty years to see. This size of budget is difficult to work with, and this is a big operation. Some of the assumptions, I think, that are good to just review quicker, for equal. This budget assumes that the city will continue to make progress towards making the fund reserve targets established by the mayor and city council, the financial policy, which should be to that general fund budget, which allows to put about $20,000 back in the fund balance. We hope to be more, we hope that's concerned, that's $20,000, that's what the budget will show. It assumes that there will be no add-on property tax increase. It does assume a small increase in the tax digest to the group. It assumes no increase in sanitation collection rates. It assumes no increase in temperature, temperature fees for housing, commercial garbage, and garbage. It assumes no increase in base for consumption rates at order of sanitary sewer. It assumes no increase in natural gas rates. It assumes there will be some increases in fees approved by the city council. We'll see that on the next agenda. Scheduled fees, rates, and fines that we discussed in the work session. Y'all recall from that, that you asked us to... We had originally proposed to watch sewer rate increases, and...
It's very complicated.
Right. We recommended, just to relax, so we did, we put that back out, and we still had it scheduled. So we did not recommend those increases. It does assume increased revenue from the new creative utility fund. And it does assume approximately 1.5% of FY 2016, which is in our budget, for all funds, roughly $180,000, which we need to follow comprehensive study of the city's position classification compensation plan, as well as filling the initial priorities identified. I wanted to highlight some of what was in there since it's been a lot since we had our work session. But what we presented is a balanced budget based on what we need for the migration.
Okay, does council have any questions for Robert regarding this general resolution? And budget assumptions, et cetera? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution 2015-18?
Make a motion we approve the adoption of fiscal year 2016 budget for each fund of the city of states.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item seven, consideration of motion to approve resolution 2015-23, which is a resolution adopting the city of states for a schedule of rates and fees and grants.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna turn this over primarily to Cindy, and give her a few notes for fully initiating this, because I'm gonna use it every year, and it's gonna simplify a lot of what we do, is gonna put all the fees, and all the rates, and all the fines in one place. You wanna say anything, Cindy? I know we presented in that work session, and everything is, like, we had.
I mean, all the departments, we've seen that they're licensed, based, and that was capital of the municipal, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the project.
You do lots of people ask questions, we're able to send them by.
I'm amazed that we never had this. I mean, I'm not trying to be funny, but I don't know how we're doing business without a book of our rates, fees, et cetera, so...
Kind of a list. This is pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, it gives a history of what it, you know, the class to increase and all that kind of stuff, so it's almost like making decisions in a board, but this gives you a context in place. So, you know, I thank you for doing that. Again, I apologize to anybody listening that we didn't have it before this year. I mean, it's pretty straightforward to me, so thank you all for doing that.
What I like about it is it puts it all in one place, that you, council, it's easy, that you're going through it, and you're looking at what all your increases and how this here, 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 here. Looking at the side of that, it's perfect.
Thanks, too. Appreciate it. Don't go anywhere, you're next. So do I have, do I have any questions before I ask for a motion?
Uh, Robert, you, we are listening here in the fire department, you said you proposed ordinance, and then there's a number of fees. Have we proposed that ordinance yet? And I guess my question is, do we approve the scheduled fees before an ordinance is passed?
I think you can, in this case, it just has them there, so when you adopt it, if the ordinance has not been adopted, it'll be back in front. I think it's gonna be, like, the council, I haven't seen my version of it, but it's, I'm gonna be supportive most of it.
If we can amend this, or if we can amend it, I think it's...
So this is where we start, and then if anything changes, we go back, and we amend it, and to reflect, to reflect whatever orders changes or whatever.
So despite the fact that we have a list of fees, since there is no ordinance, none of these fees are being filed.
That's true. And when we're looking at the ordinance, it'll bring it to you for consideration inside of time, you know, to go back and get some of those green, green machines together, at the same time, or just at least...
And we may buy them during the year, but we, in the, we have something else, so we probably
This was not a good year for workers' compensation.
No.
No. Any questions before we're sitting before I ask for a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-241?
Turn to the...
Yes, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Addendum 13, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2015-19, which is a resolution ratifying the enforcement of I. K. Smith as an assistant prosecuting attorney for municipal court of the city of Statesboro. Mr. Littard.
This is here to change the meeting and help me out with the municipal court and bringing our charter of flyers down there. Affirmative and ratified, so it's just sort of formalized. For James, that's how I'm going to do it. Do you see any question for him? Daniel Shandis graduated in Rockford High School and then was at State Department. Quite honestly, I mean, we should be doing this actually. It's like, I feel like it's a system that we need to fix. Appreciate it, perhaps. Ratified or not, we qualify as a motion.
Do you want to wave, Kane?
Yes, if you have any questions, I would like to fill them. The only question, I guess, what's, uh... What time, Allen? How often are we using a... We're calling an assistant prosecuting attorney. How often are we using assistant prosecuting attorney? Is this something that... Is this something in a year from now? We're gonna say, "Guys, we have enough at court, we need another." It's just the beginning of that.
Given the work that I've been doing, I don't see how we can afford that. This is possible. Need the fair trial, we come from the U.S. District. They pay us this, and I see that as a good first.
Do we have to create some kind of position?
I'm just...
Do we have to create a... You know, typically, you hire, we create a position. Will we be able to create some position?
You gotta pay attention to what we hear what you're saying.
Wendell, what are y'all doing up there? You're distracting Jeff.
I was saying, I was saying, we're paying Kane on the contract.
Wendell is distracting Jeff.
I see his work, his contract services. He's really the designated, which is allowed under our ordinance.
And that's actually what we passed. If we pass that, this position, maybe that would designate on the ass needed.
So, I can tell you that that's gonna be a tremendous bill for dark cases.
I guess I'm just trying to, kinda like Phil, I'm trying to figure out. I'm a lot short. But I'm trying to figure out exactly what, you know, what his role will be. How do we determine what cases he does, that doesn't have? And how does that work with the... I think in the mind of... Before this, the mind of the police officer, the mind of council, you were the prosecuting attorney there. So, I don't mind, I'm just trying to think. So now, is it still... You do the prosecuting attorney, then you hand certain cases to him? Or how, like, hey, you're gonna handle all the X?
Of course, handled on a day-to-day basis. So you have a doctor who's ready. So if you're there that day, you're there that day handling those cases. And so, usually it's not as big a problem. They're working on these cases. Hearing to the trial, there's a... There's a hearing calendar for all services. The hearing calendar is actually... And hearings are actually held, there's more of a special DUI in our cases. To prepare the trial. So if anything, a hearing back then, you could pick up the... Instant investigative force, and now they're in the trial. So it's more on a day-to-day review of cases.
And I guess the reason I asked about the position itself is because it doesn't say anything about how much we can spend. I mean, how much business can you give him? I mean, all of a sudden, is it gonna be, you know, sixty, eighty, $100,000 bill? Because you're pressing, you know, I'm just... It doesn't mention anything about how much it is gonna cost, that's all I'm getting at.
The fees are paid out of my attorney's fees. The other patient, the attorney's fees, and that would cost us, I guess. So that's the process that we're gonna start. Very difficult, I think, since...
And I would... For what it's worth, we're in unusual times right now. We've had a lot of stuff that typically may not be going on within the city. And, you know, it's taken an enormous amount of time to take care of those things in the proper way. And I can also say that I'm very proud over the last several months. I think we've done things in the proper way. And that's taken a ton of hours, time and work production. So it's my hope it can get back to where you're not spending so much time doing those things. But until that time happens, you know, we'd need an extra resource to handle it. That's all I'm hoping for.
And I wasn't... Just to be clear, I wasn't questioning the need, just that there's open-ended expenditure that we're about to improve. So that hopefully, you know, so don't...
I did have to... I had to get an estimate from... From Mr. Littard to put that in the budget. So there's an estimated amount in there. And I hear you. If we could formalize it too close, but then I can assure you that it's something that I challenge Allen on a regular basis to make sure that it's needed. And then we also decide the kind of stuff that Allen is working on. Is it best for him to work on? Is it best for us to send it outside? There's other things that we send outside, but when you get some real estate evaluated by somebody, and Allen says, "That's my expertise. I'm working on this week." It's not as formal and as tight as I would like it to be to get through some of these things. But we'll build. But I just like even that.
Any other questions we have? And do I have a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2015-19, a resolution ratifying the enforcement of I. K. Smith as the assistant prosecuting attorney for municipal court of the city of Statesboro?
Turn to the...
Yes, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Addendum 14. It's public hearing and a consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to execute contract services for Statesboro Arts Council E. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Turn to the...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is open. I'll ask Mr. Cheshire to address his side.
Really, these next three items are all related. And the first one, that you're gonna hear in the public hearing is the Statesboro Arts Council. Corporal Lee, that hearing, come to another, but others mentioned Mosses or someone. And then the downtown Statesboro Development Authority would be next to the Statesboro Convention and District. This is the annual contract that is signed with the entities in order to be able to properly share, meaning in some cases, the hotel motel tax, in some cases, the general fund dollars that go to the DSDA and the Arts Council. We incorporate into our budgets, the disbursement of the Statesboro Arts Council. Signing with them this year. Everything on there is, pretty much the same as last year. We met, we did meet with them. We met with all three entities, we said consent, and everything. We know what budget, the budget that they're proposing. And again, everything is put into our budgets. So what you will be signing will be based on that budget.
Do I have somebody from the Statesboro Arts Council that would like to come forward? Does that mean no?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not prepared to make a statement, but thank you very much for funding us. We did not serve children, our community, our arts education program, and your support.
And Jenny, how many people or how many children were in that meeting last week?
We were in about 500. We threw our programs, about some early after-school programs, and during the summer, some of them. And actually, we had over eighty-six thousand visitors. And we're proud and we're grateful, and we appreciate their support. We're just over forty-one West Niners, she knows our performance arts center and we're looking forward to educating our visual arts center on East. We try to cheer you that you're not going downtown.
The doors and things. There you go. All right, would anybody else like to speak about this particular agenda item? If not, I'm gonna ask council, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Turn to the...
Do I have a second? Discussion?
My only question, Robert, why is this contract a little different than the other one? Since there's a five percent and a twenty-two point seven seven percent? You know why that... Neither of the other two contracts had that. It says five percent on the hotel motel excise tax and then twenty-two point seven seven percent on the hotel motel tax.
Theirs is broken down into restricted and unrestricted. It's the same number, but this is broken down like that. But when it comes to the CDB, theirs is totally unrestricted.
Restricted. Okay. All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing closed. Now do I have a consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to execute contract services for the Statesboro Arts Council to market downtown Statesboro by operating and managing the Abrams Center for the arts using proceeds from the hotel motel tax?
Turn to the...
Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Addendum 15, I have a motion to open the public hearing to authorize the mayor to execute contract services for the downtown Statesboro Development Authority Main Street to market downtown Statesboro. I have a motion. Open the public hearing.
Turn to the...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is open. Robert, please address that.
Yeah, this is very similar to the last one. In this case, it's Statesboro Arts Council. Everything has been cleaned up, the language of the contract is the same as last year.
Is anybody here from the DSDA speaking?
I just wanna briefly thank council and the mayor for their continued support. We couldn't do anything that we do for downtown without your support. And we thank you for it. And we hope that in coming year, with Blue Mile and all the exciting things we have going on, we can get as much bank through your buckets as possible. And so, thank you for your support.
Would anybody else like to speak on behalf of this? Motion carries public hearing section. Okay, do I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
Turn to the...
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to authorize the mayor to execute contract services for the downtown Statesboro Development Authority Main Street to market downtown Statesboro using proceeds from the hotel motel tax? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Addendum 16, I have a motion to open another public hearing to discuss the authorization of the authorized mayor to execute contract services with the Statesboro Convention and Visitors Bureau E.
Turn to the...
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is open. Mr. Cheshire.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the third agency that we work with as well, the Statesboro Prosecution and Prosecution Bureau. In their case, we do not give them any general fund dollars. They're strictly offering their share of the hotel tax, which is very, obviously very instrumental in helping us to obtain. So we would recommend their contract replaces with this. Hotel motel tax taxes.
So they're totally unrestricted, aren't they?
That's true.
Okay. Do I have somebody from the Statesboro Convention and Visitors Bureau that would like to speak in this town?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Only we appreciate the support, but I wanted to acknowledge we appreciated the process that was very open-ended and thorough and quite frankly, again, and review assessment with some of those new authorities in addition to, again, the 140 day, and thank you for some of those. We were able to pull off some pretty fun events lately. The most recent one was the one that we held with the Georgia Soccer and the Final Four. The Georgia Department of Economic Development estimated that that impact from those three days was almost $1.3 million in economic impact, almost $900,000 in direct spending. Those are sorts of things we want to continue to do and continue to grow and market Statesboro in a wonderful way, clearly, as a real value impact to your score.
All right, anybody else like to speak in this public hearing? Or ask to close it? Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Turn to the...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do I have a consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to execute contract services with the Statesboro Convention and Visitors Bureau E to market Statesboro Motor County using proceeds from the hotel motel tax?
Turn to the...
Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for your time. I wanted to wait for a vote first, because that would be appropriate. I did have a letter from Georgia Soccer that I wanted to read to the mayor and the council and close in the audience because the letter is worth, say, in a sort of hearing with that support. And the CDB, we have a token appreciation we wanted to extend to you guys. We brought popcorn last year, I hope they bring something else. We gotta lighten up these council meetings. I know you're doing great. It reads, "Dear Mayor, morning council, the Georgia Soccer Final Four was a huge success. Now, a reminder, this had never left Metro Atlanta before. I would like to personally thank you and everyone on the team for welcoming us to Statesboro and making a weekend a great experience for all of our players, coaches, and fans. We've had nothing but positive feedback about the fields, housing, Friday night opening celebration, newspaper and TV coverage, and live streaming of the games for the players, coaches, and the fans. By the way, there were views from over 12,000 views and as far away as Italy, believe it or not. The professionalism, enthusiasm, and energy displayed by the local organizing committee was contagious, and it was a pleasure to get to know and work with everyone on the team. A special thanks to the chairs, Heidi Jeffers, and to the rest of their team, America Mint, Amy Taylor, Kevin Kennedy, Art Berger from Georgia Southern, and Becky Davis from the Statesboro Convention and Visitors Bureau. And we have heard many times in the past, it takes a village, and the city council should be proud of their Statesboro Village team. I'd like to thank you for your vision, good humor, and friendship. It's been a pleasure to get to know you. I hope you have a great summer and look forward to coming back to Statesboro and Georgia Southern in the future. There are already multiple bids that have come our way since this time, all larger, and we'll continue to push forward and try to grow tourism, specifically sports tourism as an event. We appreciate the council's personal support, but also the financial support for it too. And we did have some tokens of appreciation from that event that we thought was appropriate to do. I had no idea you could carry all of them.
Okay. This is... We declare... These councils are... This is some high end, high end here. You're probably holding up, John, it's the first time ever that the soccer... The... When you turn around, Ulysses is a big supporter of Georgia Soccer there, not located in Statesboro yet, but you turn around, Councilor Rigs, it's the first time ever in the history of the Final Four that Statesboro's ever shown up on there. So we're gonna find some frames, put them in, we have to go over it. Thanks very much.
Well, I will say one thing. With all the public stuff is all around town as the primary sponsor of this, it costs consternation. So if I get one more phone call, no public isn't offered. Yet. But anyway, thank you, Darren, we appreciate it. You know, it's... Like I said, I think we're in a very unique time where the cooperation is so good that we're able to do this. And the benefit to the exposure that we received from this was just... It's phenomenal. I mean, it was just literally phenomenal. And I had calls from all over about it, so... Thank you, thank you for your vision. And without saying much more, we're looking forward to more soccer. Maybe on an elevated level?
Maybe so.
Maybe so. All right, thanks again. Yeah, addendum 17. This public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2015-22, a resolution exempting certain vehicles from marking requirements for one year. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Turn to the...
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is open. This is short, it works on...
It can be.
Okay.
This is an item of resolution that you have to consider each year regarding vehicles that aren't marked. And it will be mine, it will be the Assistant Voice Order Director, Water Voice Order Director, Water... Water and Voice Order Director, and then also the Deputy Assistant Director. Yes. Is that all?
Two.
Dick, let's look at the scene there. Yeah. If it's... Typically, it'd be the city engineer and the manager, not both of them.
There you go. Okay. Do I have anybody that would like to speak in this public hearing? Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Turn to the...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-22?
Turn to the...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion 18, public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2015-20. And before I do that, I'll say, Darren, I'm gonna try to make this more exciting for you. Okay. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Turn to the...
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is open. I'll ask Allen to please introduce this item.
Well, this is a non-consensual towing license. There's some discussion, and part of it is discussion whether the way that they're gonna keep it the same.
Excuse me a minute, Allen, you guys, bring the microphone. Give me the numbers, sir.
Whether the way, raise the non-consensual towing rates or keep it the same. So the resolutions draft at two different passions. One keeps the basic rate, the basic towing rate, at $85. The second one increases it to the basic towing rate to $110. And I believe the towing operators are asking for the maximum safe towing rate, which is... But really, the council, I think, the decision you all have to make is really what the towing rate should be, what they should... It's all, what they should be, depending on the current levels or whether you're raising it a bit. That's how the...
Okay, before I ask for folks that came to speak on this item, I wanna get some clarification, Allen, okay? When, at some point, the basic towing rate was $110, correct? And then council voted to make it $85?
That's my understanding.
And do we know when that happened?
Do we have... I'm sorry, from $110 to $85?
To $85. And that's been that way for a year, two years?
I would say at least two or three.
Okay, so that's what our ordinance says, that the basic rate should be. So right now, our current ordinance says $85.
That's correct.
Okay. But it had been $110 at some point?
It had been $110 at some point.
Because I see signs around town saying $110.
That's right. And oftentimes, you see those signs changed and different bounds. It's a sticker, it's a red parent, it has to down, so the city stickers are...
Okay.
Red, not the potential sign. What I did on this one was to make it more clear. I changed the wording of the resolutions and made it unexplainable. But this was deregulation, non-consensual towing from private property. And the resolution cites clearly the authority of the Georgia Code that allows the city to charge a lower rate than the state maximum. And then attached to the resolution is, this version A, it says, "Keep rates basically the same as current rates in version B." And if you look at the form of this exhibit, it mimics the state department of public safety's form that they use. They break it down. If you look at exhibit A, you see towing rates and charges. It says removal fees, reviews of the gross weight of 10,000 pounds or less, $85. That's, my understanding, so 95% of cars are on the car and SUV. To get something above 10,000 pounds, you have to have an exceptionally large truck or something. And then the other side, we have your storage rates and charges. There's no charge for first 24 hours. There's no charge if the lot is closed. As follows, like I said, the same rule is applied to the state. Fees are just... It allows for an after-hours fee. The state maximum fee for an after-hours fee is $50. And the state, the Department of Public Safety and the state, allows the imposition of an after-hours fee if a car is picked up anytime outside of, I believe, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. The way this one's structured is, an after-hours fee of $45 can be imposed if a car is picked up at a time other than 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Or... Also, you cannot impose if you pick a car up at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. inside. This is not as expensive as the state. But I think the main fee you need to be considering is basically removal fees and the gross weight of the less than 10,000 pounds that should have, should be...
So... I'm just trying to get my head around it. If our ordinance says that a fee is $110, which are proposed, that's the fee. There's no saying it's $125, $135. You have to charge $110 plus whatever the excess allowance fees are for leaving it there for a while, whatever.
That's right. And can charge no other fees. And that's what this makes it clear, no sort of... If you recall, you got properties on site, say, if you parked your... If you recall by the property owner, tell you that and lock it up, you can charge that base fee to tow. After 24 hours, you can impose a $25 fee. If they wanna pick up their car on a Sunday and they're not there, you can impose another fee. But you can't impose any other fee on that day of any kind. You can't make up some sort of baggage fee or have to do something else. These are the only fees that can be charged if you're engaged in non-consensual towing.
Why, Allen, why, is there a difference in, I guess, the fees for consensual and non-consensual towing? I guess I'm asking, you may know the answer to this, but... Why not just call it the towing fee? If you call a tow company, the maximum they can charge is X. Why do we need different levels?
In my consensual towing, consensual towing is when you tell an asset to move your property. Non-consensual towing is when somebody else calls somebody and asks them to lock your property behind the gate and not let you enter.
Get an example of that.
What's that?
Example of that. So you said somebody called somebody?
You park your car in a no parking zone, it says, "Don't park here." If you park here...
On private property.
On private property, your car can be towed. And the property owner calls and says, "There's a car parked there. They'll take it away." You don't agree to have your car taken away. Somebody's taking your... Somebody's taking your twenty-thousand dollar vehicle and locking it up behind the gate, and you can't get it.
Okay, but I guess what I'm trying to make the point is, it's private property.
It's private property.
It's, it's not, it's not city property, it's not, uh, state road.
Silence, if it's parking lots.
Yeah, parking lots, or, or you park them where you are.
Georgia silence, parking lots.
That's right. Any, anybody that has private property can post a property with no parking signs and can be towed.
Now, that's different from if there's a wreck, and the Georgia State Patrol calls and says, "Come haul these cars out of the roadway."
That's right.
And that's called-
That's called non-consensual towing from public property.
Which does not apply in this ordinance.
Does not apply in this ordinance.
Okay.
And we are, I'm in the process of, we're in the police department now, for them to have, for their rotation, rotation record services, the local recs, or DUIs, and things like that, to have a contract and agreement with people on that rotation schedule that charge the same fees. They're going to charge these and no other fees. So, they will be the same, but they won't be the same levels.
In consensual towing, nobody cares?
Nobody cares.
Because that's your, whatever you, the tow folks and Ray is, will do, you know, whether, somebody's willing to pay to have their car towed? If it breaks down, something like that?
No, Allen, an article written by a fairly reliable journalist back in two thousand and eight, said that the article, that the-
I think that full disclosure is appropriate here.
Well, that would have been me. The, uh, the, the non-consensual towing fee was raised originally in two thousand and seven, lowered from one-twenty-five down to eighty-five, but then in two thousand and eight, raised back up to one-ten.
They've been, it's been, it's been doing that.
So, it hasn't changed since two thousand and eight, that year ago?
I don't think so, the last, what was it?
This is just such a mystery, this towing thing.
Look, there ought to be in there somewhere. June fourteenth, two seventeen, two thousand and fourteen. Last year, it said at eighty-five dollars for the base towing.
So, it has changed.
Two thousand and thirteen, it was eighty-five dollars.
When you say base towing, is that when the, is that when the police called whoever to pull it off the road, or what?
This is non-consensual.
Non-consensual.
And that was, and that was the figure that was in the list of, this previous list that we now have a really nice difference, right?
And I think there was some confusion about whether this ordinance was regulating non-consensual towing from private property and non-consensual towing from public property. So, the state law says you can regulate non-consensual towing from private property specifically by this state statute. So, we're clearing that up.
I'm not possibly mayor, but I think that when we went back to one-ten, I think it did not make this sense. I could be completely wrong on that, but I think that's why it is confusing. And we continue to adopt eighty-five, even though we had had a lengthy discussion with council, I want, I want it to be one-ten. I could be wrong, but I think that's right.
So today, we can clear that?
We are gonna, and, and it's a better list. Have you seen the list? It's colored, don't you? Everyone's gonna copy it.
Clear it up. Okay, so at this point, I think, I, I have a feeling I could be wrong, but I think there's several people here that would like to speak today. So, if we could proceed in an orderly fashion, up to the microphone, and please say your name and who you're with. And, you know, try to limit your comments to basically three minutes if you can. Now, we've already seen you, I'm just glad. You're welcome to come up, but try to limit your comments, and then I will, you know, give council clearly a chance to ask questions, et cetera, okay? Please do.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and Council, I'm Scott Brandon, I represent a number of tow companies that are interested in the head of the council and mayor. And hopefully will streamline part of the short, the arguments and statements to be made. I would like, if I may, approach to hand out a series of documents that I feel are the best I can.
Sure.
For Mayor.
Uh, first, I'd like to turn your attention to, for the first page. This is a copy of the oh-eight, two thousand and eight towing, non-consensual, consensual towing measure that sets the maximum fee at one-hundred-and-ten dollars. It actually set the maximum fee for storage at twenty, which is five dollars above the state, uh, maximum. So, it does need to go down to fifteen or twenty dollars. Based on my research, this two thousand and eight is the last time that consensual towing was directly allocated in extent as far as the maximum fee. So, I would submit, Mayor and Council, that one-hundred-and-ten dollars is the going rate. I included on your next page, if you would turn to what's highlighted as fourteen. This is the two thousand and fourteen document, which is titled Towing Fees. And you'll see that it lists eighty-five dollars for the first hour. Now, for the first hour, it states that this was regarding an on-call towing situation, not a non-consensual tow. A non-consensual tow is, is billed and maximized in a matter of per tow, not by the hour. It lists eighty-five dollars for the first hour in the towing fee in the last statute, or ordinance that was passed. I also have a copy of it included in the packet of the two thousand and thirteen ordinance, and it was actually ninety-five dollars for the first hour. Again, referencing what we would submit is an on-call towing fee, so.
Is this, is this tow, what is this? I mean, where did this come from, Scott?
This was, uh, this is in ordinance. You're asking about four, two thousand and fourteen?
I'm asking for this on-call, then it's your report to the mayor.
Okay, this is from the-
The second page, page two.
June seventeenth, three fourteen, five fifteen, meeting the mayor and council. This was the resolution that was adopted, setting the maximum fee for towing to storage of three dollars. And this was the list that I got from that June seventeenth, three fourteen meeting.
So, we don't know when the fee effective date goes on this?
Beautiful. Probably the resolution.
Okay.
First day, please.
June seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen.
You knew it adopted this schedule of fees?
It adopted it as- Mayor City Council, the city complains about some record services placing unconsensual towing in storage charges including provisions illegal of using our stores for some owners of our property, most of their properties as a part of the state statute. This is where the confusion starts, because there appears to be, it doesn't explicitly say non-consensual towing. Mr. Brandon, this is going to be valid, but it says it's hourly fee associated with it, which makes it within an on-call. That's where we are.
And on-call towing would be?
Rotation record service.
That's when you have a police or somebody called to haul it off public property?
Correct.
So, this is supposed to be the schedule for hauling it off public property?
Or it's supposed to be the schedule for hauling it off private property?
We just don't know.
We just don't know. It has to be a theory, and it's not clear, we have to defer, I would say, to two thousand and eight ordinance that set it at one-ten.
Okay.
Well, we don't really have to defer at this point, we just need to change the rates for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, we're gonna do so, right? So, we can just adopt.
I think, I think what Attorney Brandon is saying is, we can't point fingers for passive practices due to this very confusing situation.
Right, right. And, and also, to clarify the fact that, uh, the packet that you have received, not from me, but I believe they've, uh, the purpose for me, entitled version A and version B, uh, the gist of what I'm going at there is, version A states on the face of your document that it would, the proposal to keep it to, to set it at eighty-five, would keep the same current rates. We would find that that would be a misleading statement, question, right, this was it. And, and in fact, uh, version A would be sixty-five dollars less than the state maximum of one-fifty, twenty-five less than the current, which is one-ten. Version B, uh, is, uh, would be misleading, considering, uh, what we've just covered. It states that the increases would be of twenty-five dollars if it were raised to one-ten. No, version B actually keeps it at one-ten, uh, which is the state's code, which we would, again, point out is forty dollars less than the state, uh, maximum. So, I included on the third page of the documents I handed, a copy of the Georgia Department of Public Safety maximum rates, which states that the maximum is around fifty. And that the debris storage fee is highlighted on item three, or B three, is not considered fifteen. So, we do need to reduce to twenty-nine, fifteen, or council may have done too. And, uh, we would submit that in, uh, the business, and we have representative A and P here, looking at the cost of doing business, not only in this town, but in general, would be prudent to have, you know, to assume the one-hundred-and-fifty dollars the state allows. We have a proposal on the last page, uh, that I've included, uh, that would be very clear regarding non-consensual, uh, record, uh, service. But if it's, uh, private property inbound, non-consensual, be very clear, it would be one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So, that's what we're asking the mayor and council to set it at, uh, per inbound. Now, the storage would be the, the state square maximum of fifteen dollars per day. And then we've also asked that it would be included a drop fee, and this is, uh, a good faith fee, in other words. This is where someone comes, and their car is being towed, to allow that person to get the car dropped off to the tow truck and produce identification of keys, and not have to pay the full one-fifty, but make it there even, around sixty dollars. You can go to an ATM and get three twenties, and you get your car back, you don't have to pay so, uh, the full inbound fee. And, uh, we put that in there as a good faith effort to abide by someone who comes up in the process of the tow. It would also avoid the person having to pay the hundred, the fifteen dollars storage fee. And so, that is my submission, that we set the rates at one-fifty, fifteen, and then allow for this drop fee, just to make it clear, so that companies are under, under others, and so forth. And so, that they do have, uh, some language to say, you know, "I'm not, I'm not doing anything, you know, under the heat of it, I've taken sixty dollars to drop the car." But this is actually part of the regulation that if you come and produce the keys to have identification, you can do this, it would be straight. And, uh, in lining up, I would also like to point out, while, while we are looking at the towing, uh, business, uh, I've highlighted section eighteen dash two thirty-six, uh, may need to be revisited. We would submit on behalf of the tow companies I represent. That section in the city code requires that, uh, as far as the storage facility, that it, it says, states the facility must be lighted and available for individuals to recover it at most twenty-four hours a day. We find that that could be an overly burdened, some requirement. It's not called for under the Georgia law, I mean, again, this is an additional issue, but I'd like to counsel the mayor to be aware. What is required is that they be available twenty-four-seven. And, uh, the tow companies have no objection to be available twenty-four-seven. They're required to be open seven days a week, yes, indeed. Well, we would like the council at a later time, once we get these streets established, to revisit eighteen, two thirty-six, and, uh, make it up, uh, six days, twenty-four-seven, uh, but allow one day where they can be available, say, perhaps on Sundays, by phone, not necessarily in a neighborhood, so, thank you very, very much for your, your attention and consideration for what I have to say. Thank you, Scott.
Three minutes.
Last one, I didn't do this good.
Mr. Brandon, I thought you approved well, um, I'd also pull you this proposal.
Can you name, just the record name and who you represent?
Tracy, I'm the owner of A and P, representation.
Okay.
I brought this same proposal in front of you, both of them, a month ago. Sometimes we make things a little harder than they need to be. And we did a lot of research, and a lot of time, and ended this, and this is a very simple document. And over the last six or eight years, it's really gotten confused with what has been voted. Non-consensual, private property, non-consensual from public property, rotation list. Would like to see the proposal approved as it is written, uh, for one-fifty. The state of Georgia says that we can charge one-fifty. And if the state of Georgia says we can charge one-fifty, who are we to change it? We didn't ask for any more. That's, that's what the state says we can charge, that's all we're asking. The drop fee, sixty dollars, state says we charge seventy-five, sixty's easy, if, uh, somebody's having a car tow, they want to hit the ATM, it does, it's about five dollars. After hours fee, twenty-five dollars. State of Georgia says we can actually charge fifty. So, I don't think there's anything on this proposal that is over and above. It's very simple. And it includes non-consensual towing, it includes the rotation list, it includes, uh, non-consensual towing from public property, whether it be a wreck. You know, if somebody's in a wreck, and you're asking, three minutes ago, about the difference in public and private property. If somebody has a wreck and they get towed off, and they don't have time to tell the police department who they'd like to pick up their car, and they call their on-call wreck, and, uh, that's where these eighty-five dollar fees that you asked for. That list came from the list of, and, uh, that's, it's gotten confused over the years. The last time that we voted on the non-consensual tow rate was in O A. It's spelled out in the paper. It's the only place that says non-consensual towing. Non-consensual is different than a rotation. This proposal is simple, it just needs to get passed. Any questions? Complaints?
You good? I think, I think what Mr. Linkhart was trying to say is, this proposal is not going to have anything to do with non-consensual towing from public property. And that, that's a total separate thing, and it's not going to be addressed in this proposal. And that will be determined on a rotation basis, contractually, with public safety, is that not right?
That's right.
Okay, so this, this particular item just has to do with non-consensual towing on private property, is that correct?
That's right. The state law requires that if the city is going to regulate non-consensual towing, they would adopt a red structure annually every year. So, if we fail to adopt one since two thousand and eight, non-consensual towing, which for those years would be the state maximums.
Okay. Okay. Who else would like to speak? I know I've got some other folks out there. I'll close the public hearing, or motion and discussion? Okay, we'll discuss the public hearing, we can do that. What do you think about exhibit A or exhibit B?
Um, I will say that, uh, when Mr. Hall came, four weeks ago, I guess, a month ago, uh, the proposal that came with Mr. Brandon's end out, and the vote that faced her off, four weeks ago, a month ago, is the same as a copy of this document. Um, I was satisfied with what we had a month ago. Uh, we looked at the front end, uh, proud of non-consensual, and then we looked at the versions of it. There's not a, there's not a version that says not to exceed one fifty. I'm good enough with, uh, with what you.
Let me, I, I take it all along. I don't see you going to, uh, remember what you, uh, I look to me that y'all got these seven things. Maybe you said you had some confusion coming in, because, uh, that's what you, that y'all did, you know, from seven ten. Did you pay him that much?
Didn't ask for it too.
Right. Last year, and, and, and you still have some confusion on that paperwork, how do you know, you understand that y'all yet on?
I, I think it's non-consensual towing.
But you think, you don't, do you think, and you know it, and you think that?
Well, it's not as clear as the current regulations, as the resolutions. The reason we sent papers is because it talks about time when you're towed. So you've been towed for more than an hour. The resolution after the two thousand and fourteen, the papers, that's necessarily part of the resolution.
Well, like John, I mean, state, they have one fifty, and then they pay, if you come there and you want your car to be dropped again, it won't be one fifty, it'll be sixty dollars. They got a fifteen dollar tow, and it's free on sixty dollars. Yeah, I, I can respect, but I'm, I'm, I do, uh, respect the guys, what they do, and I feel it should be papers. They did not exceed one fifty, they just asked for really one fifty plus fifteen. They're not twenty. And what can they call the city, I mean, we out of, they, we gonna get them on state, they're gonna, bring them to the state. And they were gonna eat that, eat that, even if they knew if you just do what the state says. I mean, and we want to be, our, we were already pardoned for oh eight, now I didn't really have anything before ten, back then. I didn't know that, but I do know more than oh eight. But I mean, things go up.
One option, ladies, if you simply want to have the state maximums apply in the city, the city council should do nothing, because in the absence of action, our city council to set any fee for non-consensual towing, to raise progress by informing the state and the government.
I don't, I don't mind if state do, some other cities seem to be confusing, now we don't know what to do.
Well, I think that when the state sets, when the state sets a maximum, the state is taking into account the state. And, you know, there, I, I just refuse to believe that it costs as much to run a towing company in Statesboro, Georgia, as it costs to run one in Atlanta.
That may be so.
So, I mean, I think that was the point of setting a maximum, was to say, this is a maximum that can be charged, but you need to take into account what's fair where you live.
But I was, I was like, let you listen, you know, we don't, we don't know what it costs for these folk to do. And why, why should we do that? I mean, Atlanta, you make more, and they have one fifty, but on a percentage, that if you pay six, six dollars, six hundred dollars a month for rent down here, you probably paying sixteen dollars, or eighteen in Atlanta, but you make that. I understand, you saying it too, but it's not, it's not hurting the city regardless. Why should you be on top of this? I mean, they're not, uh, they're not going above what the state says.
Why do they regulate towing, why does the state set a maximum? I mean, why, I'm asking.
When you go to somebody that hold your property and charge you any amount of money and go back on it, and you get it back to it, they say, you can't have your car back unless you pay the, the number one, one, uh. And so it's, the reason this is regulated at fifty is they're taking possession of something they don't own and they're charging you to get back. It's a license to take your stuff.
But you learn about that, we've been through that, park before, and, and oh eight, we've been towed, trucked out before, my, my, but that's not happening anymore. If they're gonna charge one fifty and match what the state says, and fifteen to drop it, it's no argument. They can't come, they charge me forty-five, and we can use some of their license. But if you go one fifty and, and fifteen, that's it. And leave it alone. And we wouldn't be coming back next year discussing this problem, one fifty and fifteen, that's it.
The state requires that the, the city's going to regulate this activity, and they set this annual, so you do have to do this every year. You have to set a non-consensual towing base annual. If, if we fail to adopt this, this year, the setting maximums will go up. So every year you have to adopt this, for the state of office. The city's gonna exercise this, the authority granted, to set the maximums, tow rates low. You have to do it every year. It doesn't stay in place, it expires every four months.
Let me just kind of reiterate all the state and what, what we have for the state and law. So I want to get off the toilet for a minute and get on alcohol. At one time, thinking people said alcohol illegal on Sunday, something, the state came in and, and, and the government did say, all right, you can sell alcohol on Sunday at the twelve o'clock from the grocery store. All right, nobody had a problem, that, that transition went along smooth. Nobody had a problem with that. But before that, we had a thousand complaints, after he made, after he said what he wanted, and having on Sunday, or whatever, seven days a week, I've heard anybody complaining. You got, you got grocery stores, they're not packaging, they just don't sell, they can, they sell alcohol, they sell beer and wine on Sunday. Nobody's complaining. Who gonna complain about one fifty? This, this, this can be a smooth transition too. If we go one fifty and fifteen, and let it be. That's my suggestion. That's the same.
And if you do that, then now that you're saying, if we don't pass anything, we just have the discussion that we're having now, and we stop out of this discussion.
Right, uh, if you want, if you want to have a state maximum, government, Georgia, or just make some resolution, if we're not passing the resolution, and what she is, is let breaks, is prescribed by the, 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 the public safety play.
But now, there's some things in the resolution that we have. It says you can't do it the first twenty-four hours, you have to do certain things a certain way. You have to let people in there to get their car. So there are some stipulations with that beyond just a hundred and fifty dollars a tow.
And the state has all of that, there's some.
Exactly what we've got in ours is a deal.
All of that, you can't charge for the first twenty-four hours, you, there's a drop fee that they have, and so, uh, this is, all the stuff we do is done on the state. We do nothing, there's just a set of clear regulations, the government, non-consensual towing, you're regulated purely by the government, the public safety.
If we go with this final proposal, though, that would be one fifty for the tow. So you get towed on Friday night at eight o'clock, that's one fifty for the tow, plus a twenty-five dollar gate fee, right?
No gate fee, I think, I have to say.
No, it's the gate fee in the first twenty-four hours, that's it.
My understanding is, if you're towed on Saturday, if you're towed on, it'd be a hundred and fifty dollars. They, they get, they get your car inside, they tow it to the, the company impound, so it's there, that's a hundred and fifty dollars for the twenty-four hours to come and get it. They can't charge you for the first twenty-four hours, and they can't charge you a storage fee of fifty dollars for any day of your lives. But if you want to pick it up outside the hours of eight to five, Monday through Friday, you're gonna pay an after-hours fee of fifty dollars. If you want to pick your car up on Saturday afternoon, you're gonna pay a hundred and fifty dollars plus fifty dollars after-hours fee, because it's Saturday, so you're gonna pay two hundred dollars to get your car out of the impound lot Saturday or Sunday at any time. Or if you want to pick your car up at eight o'clock in the morning, you're gonna pay a hundred and fifty dollars, fifteen dollars per day, if it's there, plus an after-hours fee, so you can.
Now, you're up to two fifty.
I, I guess one of the things, I just got brought up, I don't know if the police can remember this, we were, we were getting into complaints. I parked, I parked X, I got towed for this, that's the reason why in oh eight, we went, we dropped it eighty-five dollars. It wasn't to be ugly, it was just more of anything to get some attention. You go, hey, you know, we have the, we have the regulating authority to make this a dollar tow. And then you may not want to tow in Statesboro for a dollar. So we went eighty-five dollars, and it's my understanding, after we went to eighty-five, I am assuming, because the, the response back to us was, whatever the practices were, those practices ended. Or they curbed, or they went down, that's why we went to one ten. So I have not heard a lot of complaints, I don't know if, Rob, if the public safety wants to address any complaints we've heard, but I think, if we're opening the can of worms today, and I think we need to open it up, if there's any complaints or anything else we want to talk about, I think we need to mention it. We need to say, look, this is what we like, this is what we don't like. And then, we, once we do that, the one thing I do have, I do have some concern, is, uh, is if your car's towed Saturday at one-thirty in the morning, I believe, I think that person should have the right to get their car with no fee the next day at a certain time. I don't know when that is yet, I don't know how we talk about it, but you should be able to get it. It should be a time, it's an hour or two hours, you know, regular time, you know? People coming out how to blast, you know, they're gonna be up at ten o'clock, they'll be done, you know? Hey, ten to noon, it's good, if you want to show up.
I agree, because the reality is, when you say, Councilman Lewis, that it doesn't affect the city, it does affect the city, because the people getting towed are students. Ninety percent of who gets towed are students. Other people out of restaurant parking lots, or apartment parking lots, or that, that's who's getting towed. It's not you and me. I'm not getting towed, I'm not leaving my car at a restaurant till ten o'clock the next morning. It's students getting towed. And so, those are the people that come to us for four years, and they go home talking about, you know, the car was there ten minutes, and they got towed off, or was towed off the next morning before six o'clock, or fifteen cars got towed and left in the Walmart parking lot as quick as they could, and I went back to Walmart and pulled them out, and took them down there. So that is a voice that's not here. And that's the majority of the towing business, when you get Saturday nights and Friday nights. You tell me the majority of what y'all tow is not students? So who's parking illegally?
Can I have another one?
Sure, because I see y'all towing out of George's seventh lot and all that, and I get it. I'm not saying those people don't park right, I'm not saying that they shouldn't be towed. But I understand that there's a reality as to who is getting towed.
Yes, ma'am. I, I cannot speak for any of the other towing companies, I can only speak for the majority of the non-consensual towing that I do, is from, uh, the mall, Walmart, different convenience stores. And that is in practice. I do not like messing with the students where they live. And somebody has to, that's why we have this problem. The majority of the non-consensual towing that A and P Record Service does is from a commercial business. It's a little wrong, but not wrong to everybody, that's right. Not wrong to everybody.
Right.
Okay? But, that's wrong. For my business, now, uh, another thing, Alvin, uh, mentioned the five days a week. The state says we have to be available six days a week, okay? By phone, on the, the, the majority of us, uh, you know, some will on Sunday. I'll tow your car, our practice is, uh, Saturday and Sunday, if your car was towed, I'm, I will meet you at twelve-thirty and at five-thirty, Saturday and Sunday. That way, when I go to church on Sunday, I can leave church and come by out of my office. But if anybody have their car, if you're not there at twelve-thirty, be there at five-thirty. Otherwise, you pay that dollar fee, which is pretty simple. We do seven days a week, I know the ghetto recovery does the same thing. They also state it's not eight to five, this is your normal business hours, is what the state says. Now, my normal business, same stuff I told you a month ago. My normal business hours are different than what Gadda says, okay? Mine are eight to five on Friday, twelve-thirty to five at the rate, on Saturday and Sunday. So seven days a week, you have an opportunity to go. And if you gotta have it at midnight, I do that a bit. It's pretty simple. The state says that all that, and you do have the option of, uh, not giving them, we don't saw it, we don't. So I do regulate, and it's all regulated.
Because Tracy, we had a, we, we were getting complaints, whether they were correct or not, on the use of what the regulations were.
I agree.
So, which is why, you know, so we've had discussions a lot, and so why would those things get brought up?
I think the majority of that was backed from the legal ground.
Cool, and, and, and even though, you know, the, the mayor said something is correct, the reason why it hit, even though maybe the students, what we think going to tow, the reason why this hit the fan was a parent got towed after a game. And this parent was furious, because apparently this guy knew the law.
Yeah.
He said, this is not what happened, and that's where this all hit the fan.
Somebody did something.
Very documented.
That's right. Now, if the practice doing things right, then we don't have to apologize.
And I don't know how wrong, we, we just know that it created, it brought attention to it, so.
So we did, we're all available by the state law, six days a week, majority of us are seven days a week. You know, first is like, no, it's free. I'm gonna get up and cut his hands off, but I don't want to jump, three minutes, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Yes, sir, come on up, say your name, who you with?
Troy, I'm telling the cat a story. Um, I just want to educate on it. Your car was towed on Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, from anywhere around that college apartment complex. Like you said, there's people out there having a good time. You can come pick your car up at our station, it's at three A M., and there's no after-hours fee implemented whatsoever, because state law says you can't charge, maybe for the first twenty-four hours. But we don't charge after-hours fee, because if we're there, you're gonna get your car in there. Same thing as anybody else explained. I take my all our social signs and says, man, you're over, and I, I get it, we're over the seven days a week. So, you can call or schedule appointment after now, if you're not, we wait until the business hours, you can come get your car. I think the same thing, right, confusion is between the non-consensual and the consensualist, which you read earlier and everything. There is a rotation list on Statesboro PD, and it's privileged viewing, it is not your rights. But we got this many towing companies going to Statesboro PD rotation list. We got this many in Statesboro that have a non-consensual towing permit. There's five companies here in Statesboro that have a non-consensual towing permit. So what are y'all voting on here today, or next day, or this table, or whatever? It's very prudent to define. Not the rotation list that y'all vote on every year and throw non-consensual in, because it is entirely two different things. You're two different people. Unless you spell it out, non-consensual, and I understand the little fine writing you're saying about, let's vote it on every year. I think the right thing to do is, go ahead and let this all, let the government, let the state govern. And if we're screwing up, Atlanta's calling us. There's enough titles there here in Statesboro, they're calling Atlanta, I don't want to say it. And we're really not doing our government damage anyway. I mean, since oh eight, we've been charging five dollars super C to state. So if something goes down illegally on towing a non-consensual car, the claim doesn't go to one of our, uh, they really don't check into it, Atlanta's calling us. It's because we got that permit hanging on our wall, and it means everything to us. Because without that, we can't tow anything. Now, the legally parked cars that y'all talk about is down there when they have, look, something down there, they'll have pews. They have legal parked cars all the way down Isaiah Drive. And the cops call and say, we need four towing companies right now. And they said, you want four tow trucks or four towing companies? They said, we need four towing companies right now to get these cars. If I was one of the, probably sixth or seventh towing company that showed up, those are legally parked cars for the city on public property. But again, as we reiterate today, we're talking about illegal parked, illegal parked cars and private parked. I think the best solution here, there's like no more confusion before non-consensual and a rotation list for the Statesboro PD, is to get out of government, non-consensual, just like Councilman Lewis suggested. Because there's really no, we really ain't doing nothing at all.
Troy, Troy, I think we are, I think what we're doing, we're protecting the, the right of a, of a student, because the student doesn't know, they don't, you know, they don't, they don't know where to go. They pay a hundred and fifty bucks, and, you know, they, they don't do something that they would have done with that one fifty, whether it's buy gas, or go back home, or, or, or deal, or whatever. So, and, and it is our responsibility to make sure that you guys are doing that.
Sure.
And, and I guess that's where, that's where.
The hundred and fifty is a maximum tariff, I'm not saying every person is charged a hundred and fifty.
But I think they would.
Those are incorrect, because I've had several phone calls, and over percentages, that certain cars are reduced, given that, a favor's calling, family member, whatever happened. So it's not every person being charged.
But I would say, random person, busy night, probably gonna, probably gonna be one fifty.
And then, I think it also.
Certain chances came up, it could change, of course, but.
It, it's very dangerous what we do any. Um, it, it wasn't too long ago, probably seven months ago, they had, I don't know what kind of age group we're dealing with, here, but we had a minis player, it was all at one eleven south. They don't call the cops, that's who we call, the towing company. And we go in there, and we hook and book and do our job. And so, it, I think it, it falls back on a lot of people's attitude that comes down there too. And as long as we're doing our job under the law, I don't understand what's going on.
And it, and the thing was, it's a big missed representation. We're going to be misled about the eighty-five dollars. And we're raising it to twenty-five to get to a hundred ten, so I'm sure we've been a hundred ten dollars since oh eight. And every towing company here today will attest to that. Mayone had a prior previous conversation earlier before this meeting started. I think he sees the right in that. There's a difference between non-consensual and consensual. And what y'all vote on every year is the, is the ordinance, and his rotation list for State Road PD.
Well, no, who's, who's the, who's the company that goes out and manages these private lots and parks the towing companies? The owner?
Parking Solutions.
Now, what does Parking Solutions do? How do they fit into the towing thing here?
I'm done with that.
Can you tell me, I mean, how does, how does that work with towing? I'm just, I don't, I'm a little confused about that whole thing.
Mayor, that's a private business that is not registered in State Road, it's not registered in court. With a business license, does not have a business license in City of St. Louis. Yeah, a business license is required. They work with a proper owner, an apartment complex, and they are acting as the agent for the owner of that property to call in to have the vehicle towed. Uh, where a building requires, uh, an agent for the owner of the property to notify the towing company to make that call. So, the tow receipt has to be signed. Parking Solutions actually is an entity here, and the towing companies have the property owner to have the vehicle towed.
So, they're not a towing company?
No.
So, what do they do, they sit there?
They, they would have to be checking the parking lot one way or another.
Okay.
To notify a towing company that that vehicle is parked there illegally. They would have to be surveilling that to show that someone parked in your parking lot and then walked over to another person's business. Um, so they'll be watching, um, get not too good, not good, that person was not there at the business that they were parked.
Can I do that? I thought you said it's parked.
The towing companies can't.
Oh, well, this company can.
It's a barrier.
Okay.
They didn't have a business license, did they?
They have a business license out of, uh, City of St. Louis.
But they don't have a business license in state?
Well, good, they got his parking lot, I mean, he has parked up there for.
Well, a business, and I would, I would ask this soon, but if you're licensed to do business in another city, you have a business license, and the city would, you would not have to have a city of State Road business license. That industry is not regulated by the law.
The question with those companies is who they are an agent of. They, they may claim to be an agent of the landowner, but if the fact they're an agent of the towing, just a question of fact, when somebody claiming that someone is an agent. But if in fact, you turn it on, towing services is really an agency, which should exist between the surveillance company and a towing company, that would be illegal.
So, the, this Parking Solutions, does the property owner pay them to monitor their parking? Are they paying them?
Not that I am aware of, and I have asked.
So, who's paying them?
I, I can't.
They do it for free? I mean, are they just working for free? I'm just, I don't understand.
That's counterfactual analysis that goes into determining where the agency really lies.
So, if the property owner's not paying them to surveil their lot, they're just down there out of their good conscience to help the property owner keep the lot clean? Well then, okay. I mean, I just, it's interesting how this works. All right, so I want to call in to see if I can get them to do some free work for me. Just saying. Anybody here from Parking Solutions? Anybody here want to admit they're from Parking Solutions? All right. Not today? I'm just, I'm just.
Parking Solutions can go and call a bunch of college kids that are legally parked, or they, would that be all right? Do you even say that, that college kid ever go, or they could be wrong?
I, I don't quite know what Parking Solutions does.
Well, you say they, they, they would get, you know, keep, keep beating the property clean.
That's what it sounds like.
Well, I mean, what it was a bunch of, I mean, you emphasize a college kid, or a bunch of college, I don't know, but the Miras Trujos down there, they park all the help places down there. I mean, but now, there's a bunch of college kids that don't bother me, they call the college kids, they want to teach them.
I don't know. I don't really know the facts. I just got, I gotta know more about Parking Solutions, that's all. It's kind of interesting. All right, so do I have a motion at this point? Does anybody else want to speak before I close the public hearing?
Um, yeah, I'd like to speak. Uh, not voting on anything today, or, or not voting on non-consensual towing at all. Uh, I'm not in favor of that. And, uh, I think my constituents, I owe it to them to have some sort of recourse if someone has a bad job of towing or something illegal, which hasn't hurt anything for the last six years, I hope it stays that way. Uh, but I do think that we need to keep something on the books for City of St. Louis. Um, as for the, uh, for the rates for the two exhibit A, and I mean, uh, version A and version B, uh, I would like to see number one not to exceed a hundred and fifty.
So, you would like exhibit? Exhibit A, oh, exhibit A second. I got you. Version B of exhibit A, is what you're asking. Yeah, but that's not to exceed a hundred and fifty. That's not to exceed. Version A, uh.
Next to.
Okay, so you want to take version B of exhibit A and make it one fifty?
And make A one.
That's the right.
Make A one one fifty.
A one one fifty?
Is that what I meant, is, is, is that what we brought to us a month ago? By Mr. Hart? Private parking grounds, a hundred fifty?
This is the way it would be. Is that what you're asking, Alvin?
I believe it is.
Okay.
That's for, uh, vehicles under eighteen thousand.
And then, on five, version B, and some part of it, paragraph one.
One fifty.
One fifty. Is that clear? I think that's what you need.
Um, am I correct in saying that the only difference between version A and version B is?
Number one.
Is number one, eighty-five or one-ten? Am I correct that the whole things, the whole things are different? Well, either version, because that should be one fifty. It's my fee, one and five.
That's right, and the hookup fee, that they call the, I think they call the drop fee, and the state regulations is covered under RC called an operator fee. And the towing company indicating a sixty-dollar maximum, as the state allows, and this one allows seventy-five dollars maximum, which you also like, if you want to make it look one, or they were asking.
Yes, what they were asking for, uh, the sixty dollars.
Well, you know, it happens to be sixty, because the state regulates it.
Same, same, the state, they're seventy-five. But they're saying that they will, on, currently, will do sixty.
I'm sorry, I'm still wondering about Parking Solutions, I'll get out of that. I just wonder how you work for free, I couldn't find one fifty, that's just.
I'm marking into the D. Version B, as we see. Remember, section C of that is an operator fee, right? One, the vehicle is often hooked up, voiced, basically, a person shows up, the car's sitting on the back of the tow truck. You can pay the person sixty dollars there at the scene, and he'll give you your car.
Right. On the front, on the side. They're driving down the road, and some, they can't. Please drop my car.
These are allowed, they don't have to do any of these, they can do.
Or nothing, if they want to do it. What, what this says, it says you can charge an after-hours fee of twenty-five dollars. You don't have to, but you can only charge that, you charge it on a Sunday. Somebody really wanted their car on a Sunday, you can charge them after-hours fee. If they, you couldn't charge, you have to be, you have to have, let them have their car on Saturday until ten A.M. and two P.M., sometime for four hours on Saturday. You can show up and pick up your car and not get charged an after-hours fee. And, uh, you can charge the after-hours fee if they want to pick up their car between eight A.M. and six P.M. One day if you try.
Is that language in the state law? Or is that, is this just State Road, or is this following the state regulations?
The state law, the state law isn't as precise on defining the after-hours fee.
I think we need to define the after-hours consistently.
We did, this defining the after-hours, we looked at exhibit, I was reading from the exhibit D. You go to exhibit, you go to version B, you go to the second page, talking about the after-hours fee. This men's estate language is more precise in defining the after-hours.
My, my thinking is, if you put this by the hours, and there's a license to charge that twenty-five dollar fee, it's not.
That's kitchen, that's what it's in.
But that's reasonable, if you look at it. I mean, you're saying that you got to go, let somebody do the part between eight and six and not charge them, but if somebody's probably at six and four, I mean, I think that's bigger than we ever talked about.
The only other thing I think we need to, what it means is, uh, like you said, a hundred and seventy-five dollar fee.
Well, hopefully, they'll, hopefully, they'll exist.
I just think we need to, there needs to be something listed on there, but that's not, I don't care if it's one time or two times.
What's that?
I think there needs to be, the only thing, you know, that's a reading, well, there's still not a Sunday on there, right?
No.
City of St. Louis. I think there should be a Sunday.
Well, the problem with that, I'll tell you, is that you can't charge, well, no, no, you can't charge a storage fee.
Yeah, because you could still, technically, we didn't put a Sunday on there. Your car got towed one A.M. on Saturday, you can't get it without paying the twenty-five dollar fee until Monday.
But you don't have to pay the fifteen dollar storage fee, because it had to be twenty-four hours, so I.
But you got to pay the twenty-five dollars?
You have to pay the twenty-five, but you, you.
And a lot of times, what could happen is, if your car gets towed, you realize it, and bam, you go down there, you can't. And that happens, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it would happen, the tow truck, the tow people would do it, would push it. It's just, I'd say, hey, you wake up from having a fun night, you're ready to drive back home to wherever, you should be able to grab your car, hold it, you, you paid your fee. So, I don't know how you want to, how you want to do it, but maybe you had to be open for one hour on Sunday and. If you're open for one hour, something between twelve and.
Between twelve and five.
Twelve and six, I guess, will keep you in the, in your loop.
So, you want a pretty precise time?
Yeah, they just have to have hours between twelve and six.
Are we going to bring, how do we, what do we write on this, or are we going to prove it to them? Or are we, are we going to bring it back?
But now, when we say after-hours, they don't have to, I mean, on, on Sunday, between, if you want to set it between two and three, I'm just saying that. You just, if somebody calls you and says, "I'll come down between two and three," you don't have to literally be open, but.
Why don't we do it this way, and between ten A.M. and two P.M. on Saturdays and Sundays?
There you go. And if someone complains, and then, hey, you're, twelve-thirty is between those two times. So, I mean, we're going to force them to be open between ten and two.
They just have to be down there.
Then you just, just kind of be on call.
Be on call and not charge an after-hours fee on Sunday.
Yeah, but then, if you go to the chip, you're already on call.
Right, well, I guess, Tracy, well, kind of how you're saying that is, we're doing the latter two, go, but go to one fifty. If everybody's like, hey, yeah, we're going to work with you to get your car back. First time they get a complaint, says, "Look, I called A and B," and Tracy said, "You can catch my butt, I might go up there Sunday." That's where we go, Tracy, you got to be open between sometime. And you say, "Well, he called at four-thirty in the afternoon, and said he had to be at fifty-nine." We just need a little bit of leeway to be able to say, hey, if it's.
Ten to two, it's going to force us to sit at the office.
They don't have to be open, you don't have to sit at the office, but if somebody calls you and says between ten and two, they want to pick up their car, you got to go down and let them have it, you can't charge an after-hours fee.
And you'll tell them twelve-thirty?
You tell them, "I'll be there at twelve-thirty."
Well, now, you said if they want to pick it up at eleven, that's between the ten and two.
No, I'm just saying, sometime between ten and two, you got to go let them in for, you can't charge an after-hours fee, they'll come down there between ten and two, at your discretion. Between ten and two. That's at your discretion, but, but you got to give it an opportunity, if they call you between ten and two, come pick up their car, but not an after-hours fee. But we have to give everybody, you know, people call up.
I, I believe now.
You know, and say, uh, you know, the city's going to say, "Look, every towing company has to come let you in at some point in time at their discretion between ten and two on Sunday, and not charge you to do that." If you go, if you call after that.
They have dollars.
It's after-hours fee, so.
Because, because we need to be able to educate the populace and say, this is what, this is what's going to happen. And they need to know, that when a student comes back, when somebody gets their car towed, hey, here to declare. So, Alvin, do we need to put, like, now a specified time between ten and two, or something like that, you know what I'm saying? Could I have some way to declare that, so it just doesn't?
Yeah, that needs a lot of confusion. It says, "An after-hours fee made you charge, get to be here for longer, which is applying inbound duty at any time other than between eight A.M. and six P.M. on major Friday, and between ten A.M. and two P.M. on Saturday and Sunday." So, if they only come pick their car up from nine A.M. at seven in the morning.
They can pay it after-hours fee.
Pay it after-hours, if they want to come pick it up. Outside those times, they can, they don't have to, because of after-hours.
But the flip side is, on Sunday, Saturday, you've got to be able to allow them to come get their car sometime between ten and two, and you can't charge them. For an after.
Every day of the week, there's something on time, if you want to get your car.
So, they can say, "Well, I want to go pick it up at ten oh one," so guess what? I won't be there at twelve-thirty. You will not be charged an after-hours fee, because you can come at twelve-thirty and pick up your car.
Maybe, if they, if they're required to do this, and they're sure it's open on Saturday, so they wouldn't miss the after. You can charge fifteen dollars.
Yeah, there's your open.
If you're open. If you're open, so you've got a car sitting there by Friday. You had to send somebody down there to be open for a couple hours.
Yeah, that, that gives a, a fine line there as well, that's correct. What is that? We're already twenty-four hours about a phone, so, uh, what's the state authorities going to say? Now, uh, if you're open on Sunday, or not.
There's a lady I talked to on the board, for the public's sake, yeah. There's some lady I talked to, for the public's sake.
The only one.
Yeah, I think, I think Brendan's, I think Brendan's age on all those questions.
Yep.
Well, Brendan hasn't been paying attention too much, because we've been twenty bucks for storage and hey, so, you know what? I don't think Brendan's going to get on to you for something.
I was trying to say, I don't, I don't, y'all act like they're going to come down here and. Okay, so let's just back off and see from where I close this public hearing, if we have an understanding. And I, you know, I am trying my hardest, Alvin, to see the difference between version A and version B other than eighty-five and one-ten, and can't see it. So, I'm going with version A. Exhibit A. Section A, number one, one fifty. Flip the page. Section C, number one, A, sixty.
Take it up.
The one fifty is arguably a forty-dollar increase.
Ain't arguably, it is.
You could have been on it at forty dollars.
We're heading to the, to the third line. We're dropping the twenty dollars a day, fifteen dollars a day.
Then just the basic fee, we're not talking about storage fee, basic.
Nope, then I'm worried about the storage.
Okay, and after-hours, we're going to say that you cannot charge an after-hours fee between ten and two on Sunday. If somebody wants it between ten and two, you can't charge it.
I mean, we don't need to. At your discretion, I think what you do is that, please, sir.
Well, that makes it easier for you, because I don't have to be there at five thirty. At one time instead of two.
There you go.
Yeah, which I.
Now, we're not telling you what to do. You want to go there at five thirty because you're a good guy?
I work for free.
But somebody, I, I'm telling you, does anybody does the people at Parking Solutions, who do I need to call? Who owns that?
Call the city.
Call the board, apparently, they're with.
Oh, wow. I'm going to board and find it out. I got to talk to these folks. All right, so, um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Seven minutes.
I have a second.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please take my say, aye.
Aye.
opposed. Public hearing's closed. And now, we'll go to the part where we do a consideration of a motion to approve. So, this is why I get paid with the bucks, to try to figure out how to close this. All right. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-20? A resolution adopting maximum tariff rates allowed by towing and storage operations engaged in non-consensual towing, with the following modifications to the resolution as follows. Exhibit A will be Version A of Exhibit A. Under Section A of Exhibit A, Version A, Number 1, is to not exceed $150. I'm not quite, thank you. Under Section C... Under Section C of Exhibit A, Version A, Number 1A, is not to exceed $60. Under Section C, Version A, Exhibit A, After Hours Fee, Section 1 shall be changed as follows. After-hours fee may be charged if the vehicle's owner wishes to claim an impounded vehicle at any time other than between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and between 8:00, 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, and between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. on Sunday.
Do Saturday answer.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
You're approved. You're the only counselor you can repeat it, counselor.
No, so, I don't have that, so I'm so moved to approve everything, see, man, I'm...
Let's go. It's like telephone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please take my saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. It was more painful for me. Okay. Zen item 19, consideration of motion to enter into renewal of the three-year agreement with CGI Communications Inc. for the 2015 Community Video Program, which showcases the city of Statesboro on its first site of the year.
Thank you, Mayor, this is, uh, a company that, uh, we have been contracted to perform since 2011. They came in and did a very, uh, very nice video that's on our webpage, they have several videos, including a welcome video. And they don't charge any money for this, and it's, uh, it's just a good way of showing your city to the public, because everybody goes to your websites and things. And it's time for a renewal. Again, they don't charge anything to the city, and it's the way the contract reads, and they haven't charged us in the last four years so far, so, uh, they have no reason to not believe us. And where they get their money, though, is that they're, they charge businesses, and it's up to them to go to get that. They charge businesses, and how much it is to be able to advertise on there.
No, that doesn't mean that statesbroadGA.com is gonna be sponsored by Pepsi.
No. No, so, and the mayor asked me to bring one of the videos we have, I wanna see it, it's not a little man I had. I think it's well done, what they've added in the next, under this contract, you will be able to add another feature where you can go out and... Let's see, let's, let's back up, but anyway, they're gonna add an app that will be able to put it on our phones. And if the mayor wanted to do a welcome or do something that she, that we've got something going on, we'll be able to take that app and actually do a recording of that and put it out on our webpage. It's instant. We're doing a run in Statesboro, we wanna do a little interview out there, show the little race, put it on there, we'll be able to do it, it's all through us. This is just, I guess, this is one of the, in 2012.
Hi, my name is Paulie Gordon, and I would like to welcome you to the beautiful city of Statesboro. I share Statesboro with over 20,000 other people. And I'm sure that if you have anywhere in West Main Street and everybody in Jersey or England, flashing above the Statesboro Arts Center and historic downtown Statesboro. Whether you're here, looking for a vacation, higher education, or visiting places at all, we have many to choose from. The next time you're back in Queens, stop, go live, and stay at our address.
Pulsing with life, the electric energy pumping through Statesboro is tempered only by our down-home feel and authentic brand of southern hospitality. Our city boasts one of the largest economies in the state, home to four major shopping centers, including the world's largest Walmart distribution center. Statesboro operates as an entertainment oasis for neighboring communities. Hard work isn't all we're about. In Statesboro, we play hard too. With Georgia Southern University providing a number of additional attractions, residents have their pick of local recreation. Whether cheering on the Eagles or enjoying the feast ropes and boutiques of historic downtown, good times abound in Statesboro. Children receive lessons in character and academia through the Pollock County Public School District and other private academies of the region. What's an exceptional standard of living without your help to enjoy it? Thanks to East Georgia Regional Hospital, quality medical care is a local commodity. Statesboro, Georgia, it's all right here.
So, this is just an opportunity to renew or another four-year contract with CGI, and, uh, with an additional app, and some things that they can do now. I talked to staff about it, including Jeff, the lady in some beats, and they said that they've been good to work for it, and they would come down and produce some new videos to us. I believe we want to reflect, we want to, this, we continue to have a good relationship.
Are there any questions, Rob, before I ask for a motion? Okay, we have a motion to enter into renewal of the three-year agreement with CGI Communications Inc. for the 2015 Community Video Program, which showcases the city of Statesboro.
And I do have a question, it says, uh, Grand Paul, well, part of the contract says, "Grand Paul exclusive streaming video rights to CGI and subsidiary affiliates." I know, one of the projects Brian Taylor was working on is possibly streaming city council meetings. So, uh, I think we may wanna table this and look at that before we, before we agree that contract. So, I, if, if I was gonna propose a motion, I would be a motion to table this.
That's fine, please, do we have a motion to table that?
Yes.
Number seven?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed. Zen item 20, consideration of motion... To afford a contract extension for auditing services in the Canada firm with Thinkville near Westville there, with way of 42,000, for one additional year, in the city.
Yes, um, the finance department would like to ask for continuing, as said, audit, due to the fact we're about to begin our financial software conversion, and we felt like it would be the city's best interest to have a continuity of the auditors during, the same auditors during our conference. And we would also look at, reevaluate how the conversion is going, and possibly ask for a second extension in February.
Now, the memo says you're looking for a two-year extension.
We came back in our only asset for one year at this time.
I did, I asked for that, which was our party, we need extended, extended, and I wanna be very fair with putting things out for bid, and, you know, that's one of the things I've done insist upon. But however, in this case, what Cindy said, one, we kind of have a long timeline here, let's just be honest. And secondly, the fact we were doing the financial software conversion, this may not be the best year, I said, so let's just do it for one more year. And I was raising it way from one to two, one. Is that fair, is that a good? Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for picking this one up.
Motion's approved.
So we do it, all right, any discussion? All in favor, please take my saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, other business from city council, well, I don't have any, but I'll turn it to somebody else, so, why don't you bring it up? Okay, yes, uh, Rob?
Just a few items, I did wanna update you on the status of the resurfaces, which contractors in hand. So far, each service, Stockyard Road, the segment of West Main, it worked real good. He pulled out for a couple weeks, I think it was back, uh, I guess the second week of July. We continue, but he recognizes that he's got some, some time constraints when it comes to project around George Southern, so, there's pockets of that. He's down, finishing that any time. Something the mayor discussed with me earlier today was just trying to get better updates of our road and drainage projects on, on our webpage, and I agree with that. We will be working with IT to do that, if that's a challenge on our webpage, so that's simple, we'll be working on it, try to make it, get anybody coming in early, figuring out where our parking is. So, we recognize that, and I appreciate you talking to us.
And even, and even, just to be a little bit clear, Rob, tell me, but one of the things I talked about was the roadwork going on 67, which is not our roadwork, but I'd like to call and be able to click on that link and say, this is the state doing the roadwork in our town. And this is the state scheduling, why they're doing it, is that fair?
Yeah.
Because, like, you know, we get questions, I'm like, I'm... You're gonna have to deal with us, when your rocks are hitting your cars, driving into your neighborhood, or whatever, so, okay.
That's a good one, because we know enough about it, that it's still a project that is, and it's, it's, it's... Second item, I wanna congratulate Cindy West, she took her certificate in financial management, she's a member of the school for state and local finance. And she gave a brief, well, that included three, four tracks, includes her analytics for public finance, expenditures of revenues, and then two, uh, financial management investments, investment debt. And just, we're hearing from her in my business, and she was the first person to complete all the contracts, especially that's about finance. And again, they are important, and that kind of stuff is, because if you've seen our audience, which you, which you're coming to here, tells us about their particular aspect of themselves, you know? And I talked to somebody the other day, yesterday, about what they're doing in their town, and they said their list is extensive on what they're getting with, so I think we need to finish for granted a lot of times, oh, and somebody's doing really well, it's comfortable, so, but that is not necessarily the case. So, it's a great job, and she did that voluntarily, she took that class, and she didn't have to, so that's credibility to her, but, uh, especially as it's, I appreciate this, you know? Took a lot of gear. Um, did wanna give you, let you know that the Stormwater Utility and the comprehensive program is going well. I saw Marcos here, Marcos is the manager of that program, and they're on task. The, we have decided, just because we get a, a hiccup in our billing, we're not gonna officially start the billings until August, so, do that. Doesn't mean that we're not continuing on the program, and being ready and getting ready with some hires, and whatnot, but like, when we roll that out, we're gonna, if you're right, and we have around a hundred parcels that, um, we're still trying, trying to find the addresses to, because we have a building address. And, uh, so, we've, uh, delayed that for a month, the company has been ready to go. Marcos has handed out a green package to everybody here, just gives you an update on what they've done so far, it's got some people that asked questions in it, it's got some contact information, it's got some complaints form in there. Uh, they're really working hard, so, um, I expect either the next conference meeting, the second conference meeting, or July, if you're a little more formal presentation, but I'll be ready for that. The questions that you may get, we will be directing stuff to Marcos, so, give you an idea of what the initial plans are, how to enroll that program, and you might, uh, feel real positive, because I, uh, I have all confidence in it. So tonight's just kinda to let you know where it is, and we're still a month away from trying to, to, to feed on that.
I have a question. You got PDFs?
Excuse me?
You got PDFs, please?
Yes, we got all copies up there, so, a little more, if you want.
PDFs are easier to carry around.
I'll do that.
The last item I've got, Sue asked me to get some ideas for the work session for the, you know, we're gonna discuss the temporary bidding, she's got her calendar. Do you have any suggested dates, Sue? Y'all could be able to give us a couple, we're working toward those, if we do wanna have time to contact some of the vendors around town, give them the opportunity to be there, of course. Derek, can you?
I didn't know any dates, so then, it was Friday, July 30th, or, uh, November 6th, or September 11th. When they sent the news, you...
Then we give a 90-day...
It's the 7th?
Yeah.
That's the first...
We give it 90 days, so, two weeks into that now, we wanna really try to hear your thoughts, and we can get our organs ready and put it in place, and have a ready guess, or, at least, in August.
No, we'll do a work session in August.
No.
We'll do the work session in July.
That's what we wanna have, to find...
Well, we gotta have, we gotta have two work sessions in July, I forgot to bring this up, but we need to do one more alcohol and then draft something. And so, I'm gonna try to do it through the end of this month, because of conferences and things like that, but we're gonna need to come up with a work session for that. So, I'm assuming sometime between the first meeting, council meeting, and second council meeting, to do that, because we don't have enough people right now. But on that, so we're gonna have to, I think in the next meeting, we'll figure it out, and we got it down here. Okay? Is that okay, Mr. Parker?
We do. That's all, yeah, thanks.
All right, Mr. Parker, thanks for the way to come, conflict.
I have a sick wife and a child at home, so I'll be very brief. I'm here on behalf of the Downtown City Development Authority to talk about the number one thing that we hear from potential customers and visitors, why they don't come downtown, that's parking. And we've had some complaints from a number of merchants about this issue, and I think you'll notice, we have lots of those two-hour parking signs downtown, but I don't think since I was a home child, we've actually ever enforced, um, those, those regulations. And we, uh, I think there's a number of instances where business owners or certain state entities, their employees will park in front of merchants all day, uh, and, and sit there and block up the on-street parking. So that plays into that perception problem we have with coming downtown. I, I was, my charge was to ask councils to look into this in the city, see if there are some solutions. I didn't realize parking solutions works for free, so they may be... They may be, uh, the solution we're all looking to. But, but if you notice on that beautiful video, the beautiful historic downtown, was actually the market, not downtown. And, and I think one of the things that makes it harder for businesses downtown is this perception of parking, and, and I think, it's more perception than reality a lot of times, but when you do have, you block invisible businesses up front for eight or nine hours, that's a problem. So I think there's a couple of merchants who also wanna briefly address councils, that's what I'm...
Apparently, employees of these merchants, or, uh, employees that are parking all day, yes?
That, that's my understanding, but these two merchants, I think...
Can I call up and just real quick, what else do I need to be thinking about, I think, you know, that is gonna be...
Come down, I'm waiting for you quick. Um, my store has been locked for two years. I have struggled for two years. Mary's Inn, out of 22 West Main Street.
Okay.
And, um, it's hard for my customers to find it, or even drive by, because obviously they will get trucks. A lot of, uh, people drive through West Main Street, they can only focus getting through West Main Street because the parking is tremendous. And people jaywalk constantly throughout the whole block. Um, we got tried many ways to get, or, and ask the owners of the businesses and their employees to stop parking and blocking on the businesses, and they're still doing it. Even after the DSD and both the latter, they refuse to bring their vehicles. I have six parking lots on my block, and four businesses, which I have all business signatures. Three to four of those spaces are filled with business owners and their employees. And we want to see if we can get something fixed. I go outside the city to... I go outside the city to invite people in to shop at my store, the parking issue is the problem.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Proctor, and I'm owner of Manfred's Boutique and Boutique and Southern Land. And for the last three years, I've been downtown, and I had to make a really hard decision this past April to move my consulting shop from downtown. Parking was part of that, wasn't the main part of it. Um, I, I've gone the last three years to the business, uh, businesses that, that sit beside me, asking them to, you know, please don't have their employees to park there, please don't, stay vehicles there, you know, just often do everything I possibly could, you know, to try to, to alleviate the situation. And I, and I just had to make a business decision, as a disasheer, to move to, uh, part of the business to another location, you know, and I, I believe in downtown, and I will continue to keep, you know, working businesses downtown. But it was, parking was very instrumental in my, my reasoning for moving.
Thank you. Yes.
That's, that's all I've done for today, and I probably didn't help a short.
Anybody else? Another consideration. I mean, this is not, this is just out of mere curiosity. As a business owner downtown, what would you feel maybe about having parking meters on them, have them for? I'm just, I'm just asking, do you think that would be a detriment to people coming to your businesses if they had to put a corner in the meter?
I ask, I have asked my customers and business associates also, that say that they would not mind putting a few points in the meter to be able to walk in to my shop, or to even have a place to call.
Just curious, I'm not even remotely saying that's a possibility, but I do like to hear feedback, so.
And I, for the last two years, uh, with the DSDA, going to different small towns, where we've looked at different parking issues and solutions, uh, and I'll, and a lot of the small towns, they do use the parking meters, or even the paid parking lot.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
For a hundred fifty bucks, we just towed.
Yeah, parking solutions.
Part of calling.
Probably. We gotta find out if these people are, so we can talk to them. Just, I'm sorry.
We'll get with, uh, with Bob and Alan, and look into that. We would hope originally that maybe the letter would help, and evidently didn't suffice, maybe it helped with somebody with a different case. We'll look into that and report back.
Yes, Charlie, we're working with her.
Possibly, you know, so we'll, um...
Usually adverse action.
Yeah, because all the places look at someone's, uh...
Yeah.
We'll get, we'll get back with y'all, we'll go back, council.
Well, the problem is that our, our state agencies are taking the parking access, so it's not just...
I can move to...
DA, sheriff? Hey, we don't need any of them all.
Yeah, let's get some money from the GDM.
There's all, all construction a little bit.
It's a little light, getting a little punchy. Um, do I have a motion to enter to executive session, discuss personal matters, and to exit executive session?
Motion to exit executive session.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, no action taken. I have, do I have, uh, number twenty-five on the agenda, which is a consideration of motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash twenty-five, a resolution waiving attorney-client privileges to certain attorney work product only. Do I have a motion?
Do I have to move? Was that, you, what, move to release the document as a request?
Yeah, you had a motion, a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash twenty-five.
There you go, so moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion does not pass. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sheriff.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any adjourned?